Good evening and thank all of you for being here tonight. We are here, um, tonight, it's January the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we're here for our work session tonight on House Bill five eighty-one, House Bill five eighty-one. We're gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Henderson if he would do our implication for us tonight. And I'm gonna ask, um, Commissioner Edwards if he would lead us in our pledge tonight.
Yeah, yeah, and you're right Commissioner. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I appreciate if we, if you could defer it to some, some, to a preacher. I just have many good things have been going right for me today.
Okay, okay, sir. I, I think I'll do it then, sir. I greatly appreciate it. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for allowing us to be here. Father, we now pray that if you will, Lord, to open our hearts and our mind. Uh, give us your knowledge and your understanding, God. Touch us, God, and touch this community. Bless this community and every family that's here, God. We so graciously thank you in your son, Jesus' name, we pray tonight. Amen. Thank you, sir. Again, we're here for our work session tonight on House Bill five eighty-one. I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to Mr. Cooper and let him, um, give us a quick opening and then we'll bring up the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for our members and residents of the community I come before you today in this work session. Today, we're gonna talk about House Bill five eighty-one. Today, we're gonna talk about the floating homestead exempt tax, the opt-out process, its effects in relationship to property taxes, local government revenue impacts and perspectives on that, the FLOS sales tax, the public hearing, uh, mechanism associated with it. And we're gonna do that with two Pantheon figures in relationship to this matter. First, Mr. Aaron Myers, who is with Gerard and Davis, the attorney, he will speak specifically and give an overview of House Bill five eighty-one. And also our chief appraiser, Ms. Marty Kennard. So at this particular time, I'm going to yield to Attorney Myers to begin with the presentation.
While he's coming up, I do wanna also recognize that we do have our tax commissioner, uh, with us tonight, Mr. Brent Bennett as well. Thank you.
All right, um, good evening Commissioners. Uh, it's always a pleasure to be up here and, uh, what I would like to do is just walk you generally through, uh, give you, uh, nuts and bolts overview of what HB five eighty-one is, what it does, uh, how it is going to affect property taxes and revenues in the county, not only in the present year, but also looking ahead. And what I would like for everyone to walk away with is, is a good understanding of, um, not only, you know, what this law is, but, but what the implications of it might look like from, from the county's perspective over the next ten, fifteen, or twenty years. So I would like everyone to have a, a good long time, a long-term, uh, look at this law and think about it from the, the policy side. Uh, now ultimately, what it presents you with are, are some really, uh, powerful policy levers that you as the Board of Commissioners or for the cities, for their city councils, uh, have to, to grapple with really, uh, to decide what the best policy is for the county going forward. Uh, this will have some long-term effects. Um, but neither option that, that I'm going to go through is better than the other. It, it comes down to policy preferences. Uh, which way are you going to pull the lever is going to determine how things unfold years from now. Uh, so just give this some careful consideration. Uh, after I go through and explain just a overview of, of how this works and what the options are for you, uh, I'm gonna invite Ms. Kennard up here because she's done a deep dive into the numbers and she'll be able to give you some additional perspective on what this actually looks like, boots on the ground. Uh, and then I'll, I'll come back and I'll close by explaining, uh, what my recommendation is going forward and just to cut, so there's no suspense, my recommendation is going to be regardless of whether or not you intend to opt out of this homestead exemption. I think it would serve everyone's interest to go ahead and conduct the three public hearings, uh, just because this is a big change and the more you can get information into people's hands, the better, um, because this would have long-term effects. I think it's good for people, uh, to engage with this, show up to the hearings, let their voice heard. But also here's some of this important information that I'm gonna share with you so that, you know, in five years from now, if, uh, if, if, you know, once we see what this looks like and how things roll out, we'll be able to say, you were part of that process. We had public hearings. We talked about this. This, none of this is a surprise to us. This is a policy direction that we took, uh, and we can always evaluate it down the line and make tweaks. But because this is a big change, uh, I don't think it should be sprung on anybody, one way or the other. I, I think if you were to poll the public, most people would say, oh, there's a new homestead exemption. Of course, I want the homestead exemption. I think that's everyone's default, uh, position on this. Uh, but there are trade-offs. And, you know, maybe keeping the homestead exemption is the right decision from a policy perspective. Uh, but I, I think it would serve everyone's interest to go ahead and have the public hearings just so that we have a, an opportunity to fully vet the issue and talk about it and make sure that everyone goes into this with eyes open. So, uh, HB five eighty-one, it was passed last year by the General Assembly. And the big feature of what it does is it creates a statewide floating homestead exemption that's going to apply to all homestead property in the state of Georgia unless the local governments opt out. Uh, so the, I'll start with the opt-out. The opt-out is an individual decision that's made by the taxing agencies. So, uh, the cities, each one of them individually, have a decision on if they would like to opt out of the homestead exemption or not. If, if you do nothing, the homestead exemption will go into effect. And when you levy a county property tax, that county property tax is calculated against, we call it the tax digest. That's the value of all the property in the county with that homestead exemption built in. So that's if you do nothing. If you take no action, the homestead exemption is automatically going to go into effect. If a city opts out, it doesn't affect county taxes. If the school opts out, it doesn't affect taxes for county purposes. So each of these jurisdictions is going to make that decision for themselves. And, uh, I'll talk about the, the FLOST penny sales tax. Uh, that's one thing where it matters, what another jurisdiction does. But for the purposes of the homestead exemption, you're in control of your own destiny. And every city is in control of their destiny and the school board's in control of its destiny. It decides whether or not this homestead exemption is going to apply. So what is a floating homestead exemption? So, uh, right now, uh, across the state, there, there's a statewide homestead exemption that everyone's available, uh, has available to. Uh, it has to be your primary residence. You have to live there. You have to own the property. So obviously, if, if this is your second home, you're not gonna get the benefit of the exemption. Uh, if you own commercial property, you've got a, a store in the county, you're not gonna get the benefit of the exemption on that store. The homestead exemption is just what it sounds like. It's a tax exemption that applies to your homestead. So the homestead exemptions that are currently on the books are pretty modest. They're tend to, the, the state exemption, for example, is two thousand dollars off the net assessed value. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar home, your assessed value for tax purposes is gonna be forty percent of that, so forty thousand dollars. You take two thousand dollars off of that, you're taxed as though your property has an net assessed value of thirty-eight thousand. But it's not a very big difference, uh, two thousand for, for the average homestead exemption. What this is going to do is instead of reducing your property value in year one, it's called a floating homestead exemption because in year one, we lock in your homestead value. Uh, and there, there are some exceptions to this lock-in. Uh, but for the most part, your, your property value is then frozen, so homestead freeze. Your home, your property value is frozen at that year-one value. So let's say the tax goes into effect. When the property tax bills come out for twenty twenty-five, the county's millage rate is gonna be applied to your frozen value, but it's still your twenty twenty-five value. So for the current year, you're not gonna see any change. Your homestead value is still gonna be what it is. The difference is, is in twenty-six, when the county sends out its property bills, uh, property tax statements, uh, everyone's properties are gonna be assessed on their twenty twenty-six values. And as you've all seen over the last several years, real estate values continue to climb. So if you've got a homestead exemption in twenty-six, your tax is gonna be based on your twenty twenty-five property value. So you start to get a little bit of the benefit. By twenty thirty, for example, it's not that far away, but you're going to see substantial growth in the real estate market. But if you own a home, at least for tax purposes on your home value, you're still taxed at that twenty twenty-five property value. So the policy benefit of this is, this is a great way to encourage people to put down roots and to stay in Newton County. Uh, it, it recognizes that people who have been part of the community for a long time, they've paid their dues. They've paid for this infrastructure that we're enjoying. And so they pay a little bit less of a share of the taxes going forward. So that, that person who, who owned property in twenty twenty-five and they still live here in twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, they're going to really start to see the benefits of this homestead exemption stack up. The trade-off that you make, because there's no such thing as a free lunch, the trade-off that you make is we are freezing taxes for some people and on some properties, but we're not really affecting how much things cost. And as a county government, you're, you're a very large employer in the county. You've got a lot of employees. And their cost of living continues to, to rise. You've got, uh, you know, from the employment perspective, you've got competitors all around you. You've trained up your firefighters, you've trained up your EMS employees, you've trained up your sheriff deputies and neighboring jurisdictions would love to come and hire those people because you've got some really highly trained county employees. And in order to retain the staff and maintain that investment you've put in them, employee salaries go up. The cost of gravel goes up every year. The cost of fuel goes up every year. The cost of operating your government is not going to go down. The cost to provide services to people is not going to go down. So while we're freezing the home values for some people and we're, we're locking that in for tax purposes, they're gonna see a benefit. You're going to have to increase taxes on others in order to maintain the level of services that you're currently providing. So from an economic development standpoint, this may not be the, the, the best strategy for promoting economic growth in the county. Because the, the trade-off here, by freezing your, your homestead property digest, by freezing your residential digest, your commercial property values are gonna continue to rise. And in order to keep up with the revenue needs of the county to provide the services that the people want, you're going to have to increase the millage rate in order to get the same, you know, uh, inflation-adjusted dollar year over year. Right? So there are trade-offs. This is a really good deal for the homeowner. This is not a good, as good of a deal for, for someone who owns some other type of property in the county, whether it's a second home or a commercial or investment property. They pick up some of the slack. So this is a shifting of the tax burden. I think that's the most important thing. Um, and again, this may be the policy direction that the county Board of Commissioners believes is the best thing for the county. And, and that's fine. Like I said, I don't think there's a right answer here. I just want you to make sure that you understand that these are policy trade-offs that you're making. So this homestead exemption is going to go into effect starting this year unless you opt out. Right? The opt-out process is very simple. Um, the state law that we're talking about, HB five eighty-one, it was passed by the General Assembly. It was passed by the voters in a statewide referendum. And, and I will add, it was strongly supported by the voters because who turns down a homestead exemption when they show up to vote? Uh, so it, it has a lot of support, but it was difficult to pass. The General Assembly passed it, but they made it very easy for local governments to opt out. If you don't believe that it's in your best interest as a county to have this homestead exemption go into effect, the Board of Commissioners simply needs to have three public hearings. Uh, you've gotta run a, a legal notice in the paper and on your website one week before the first hearing uh, and keep that notice up on your website while the hearings are going on. And then at the end of the third hearing, or sometime before March first, the board passes a resolution that says respectfully, we're opting out. And then we send that resolution to the Secretary of State and you're done. You've opted out. So they've made it very easy to opt out. The, the one feature is, is you've gotta conduct three public hearings. And this is the same requirement that, uh, they, they make you go through if you're going to, uh, when you're establishing your millage rate each year and you're not doing the full, uh, millage rate rollback, you just have to have three public hearings. The, the point of that is to make sure that the public's informed and educated and up to speed, and then ultimately the decision is yours. Um, one other key feature of this homestead exemption is that it's, um, you know, I mentioned that the benefits accrue gradually. So in year one, you don't see that big of a, of a change, or you won't see any change in your property values for tax purposes in year one. But year two, you, you may start to see a little bit, the, the, I think the, over the past few years, the housing market's gone up about five to six percent per year, maybe more. Marty can correct me on that. Uh, so we're talking about a five percent reduction per year over time, and that's not a reduction from what you're paying today. Um, what, what I'm saying is the amount of taxes you pay to the county are going to freeze while the amount of taxes that everyone else is paying are going up over time. So you see the benefits build up over time. Uh, the other key feature of this is that it's, it's not permanent. So it's gradual and it's not permanent. If you sell your home and someone else comes in and buys it, that's, that, that sales price that they pay in year one is where they start. So their baseline, uh, would, would be later. So one person could have a baseline that starts at twenty twenty-five property values. In five years, they sell it to someone. When that person comes in, their first-year taxes are at twenty thirty values. Uh, but then in twenty thirty-one, they're still taxed at twenty thirty values. So you see, it resets when the property is sold. Um, so over time, eventually, your, your residential values will creep up. Uh, but for the most part, we, we can think of the, the residential digest as being, uh, frozen or stunted. It's gonna, it's gonna rise much slower than your commercial digest would as far as the value, uh, perspective. The other way that the homestead freeze would be affected is if you make any substantial changes to your property, if you make a substantial addition. So you've got a, uh, uh, an older, small, you know, uh, say a thousand-square-foot, uh, building, uh, home, you're living there. You, you do a ground-up renovation. It's now five thousand square feet. All of the additions are going to be taxed based on the fair market value of the additions in the year that you make the change. So you, you can't come in and, and buy a, a very small home at a very low tax value and then make major changes to it and still pay that, that old property tax. When you make those improvements and those substantial changes to your property, your property tax assessment level is going to increase, but then it'll get refrozen again after that change. Okay, so we've talked about the, what a floating homestead exemption is, uh, what it does for the taxpayer. Uh, I've touched briefly on what it does from the county revenue side. Um, and so at this point, I'd like to have, uh, the chief appraiser, Marty Kennard, come up. She's done a deep dive in the numbers and can add some context. I've told you generally it's gonna affect county revenues because it affects the tax digest. Uh, Marty has put in the legwork and she can actually tell you what that's gonna look like. You know, going back in time, what would it look like if we were to have implemented this a few years ago? What would it look like today? And then make some projections about what it would look like going forward. And then when she's done, I'll come up and, uh, there's a couple, uh, of additional things I'd like to talk about. One is the, uh, the new floating sales tax and what that could mean. Uh, and then I'll, I'll conclude by talking about the opt-out process again and, and give you an opportunity to ask me some questions about this.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Welcome into Marty.
Hello, good evening. Let's get past all that. Okay, so what I did is I looked at a scenario with an if scenario. What if this was enacted back in twenty twenty-one, this House Bill five eighty-one? And I looked at, what you see here, the top column is our homesteaded values and that's our forty percent value. So these are only homesteaded properties. And that's a one point eight billion, what you got?
Can I get you come up to the mic just a, to the mic just a little bit? Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Absolutely. And so what you're looking at there is what the values were on the digest for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four is your top column there. And that's how much those values increased from year over year. As you see, we saw substantial increases in our residential property values. What we're looking at in the middle there is what if this CPI, the Consumer Price Index, had been in effect and that goes up? It'll be determined by the revenue commissioner each year. And what we, I took was a three percent CPI. And what you're looking at is the difference in the value and the multiplied times the county millage rate. This would just been the county-only portion right here, county-only. What you're looking at is a seventeen million dollars loss in revenue. Okay?
So we'll make sure everybody understands what you're saying. So when you say county only, what you mean by county only?
Just the county millage rate, which is your nine mills. The, it was what, nine point four five four, eight point four three nine, and eight point two four two.
So this don't, doesn't include the school board?
It does not include. This is just county only. Okay? I did one for the city of Covington as well. They would have saw a one million dollar loss in revenue. And then I did one for the schools, which of course you know there's millage is a lot higher. So what you're gonna see is a lot greater loss there. So you're looking at thirty-three million dollars they would have lost. So now we're gonna look at the future, the projections, the unknown. Of course, we don't know what the housing market is gonna do over the next few years. But if we looked at it starting in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and we just took a standard six percent increase is what I did there, year over year. And then we took the same three percent for the CPI. And that's your difference there. So you'd see a loss of four point six million dollars in revenue for the county-only portion. Okay? And then I did one for the city of Covington. And then you've got one for the schools. Therefore, you'll see like an eight point nine million dollar loss. Um, that's all I got on that. Any questions?
We're gonna take questions as soon as, um, Aaron get done. So we may call you back up.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Sure.
All right. Thank you, Marty. That, that was excellent. Um, so I, what I'd, I'd like to pick up on a theme that I was talking about earlier, and that is the policy trade-offs, the, the decisions that you're making. So if we, if we look at this projection for, uh, let's look at the twenty twenty-six column. So the loss in revenue. Uh, let's, what, what we're doing here, the way this works is we're assuming that in twenty twenty-six, the property values across the county are gonna go up just like they have been over the past few years. And I think Marty, uh, and in fact is, is perhaps underestimating the increase. She's put it at six percent. I've seen estimates as high as seven or eight percent. So, um, what, what's happening here is if you've got the homestead exemption, your values are, are essentially capped. There's a three percent allowed increase per year. That's just to account for some inflation. Um, but everyone else's values would go up that full six percent. So if you look at the twenty twenty-six column, she, she's estimating that you keep your millage rate the same at, uh, eight point two four two mills. So if you levy the same millage rate in twenty twenty-six, that eight point two four two mills, what you're going to see is the tax revenues coming into the county are one and a half million dollars less than what you would have gotten with that same millage rate the year before. So historically, the way this works from a county revenue perspective is because the, the cost of goods and services through, through inflation, because that rises at the same time your property values are rising. They're both rising together. You've been able to meet your needs in the county to keep up with the, the cost increases of providing services without a major change in your millage rate. In fact, over years, your millage rate has gone down and, and that's taken a lot of hard work on your part. You should be commended for that. Um, but going forward, it's not going to be so easy because a big part of your digest is now frozen in place at this three percent, even though the cost of goods and services is gonna continue to rise faster than home values. So what are we going to do? In order to get that one point five million dollars back, you're going to need to increase, you would need to increase your, your millage you're going to need to increase, you would need to increase your, your millage rate above eight point two four two. Right, I don't know how much that is, but it would take, something would have to give, right? The, the property values are staying flat. The cost of living is going up. If you don't increase the millage rate, you're going to get less money, less inflation-adjusted dollars than you would normally want. So either you find one and a half million dollars to cut in your budget or you make an increase in your millage rate in order to generate that additional one and a half million. In order to generate that one and a half million with a tax increase, um, again, because we've shifted the, a, a part of the burden from the residential digest to the commercial digest, uh, or, I'm sorry, the non-residential digest, your non-homestead taxpayers are gonna feel that even more. Because again, remember in twenty twenty-six, they're being taxed on twenty twenty-six values. So if you increase that millage rate a little bit, it's gonna have double the impact on them. Your property owner, your homestead taxpayer who has the tax exemption, they'll see a millage rate as well, they'll see a millage rate increase as well. But it's gonna be cushioned because their property values have been capped at that three percent inflation growth. So even if the millage rate goes up, the homestead property owners still pay a smaller share of the tax burden than they would have, right? So just because they're seeing a millage rate go up, the important thing for the, the taxpayer to understand is, well, that doesn't mean you didn't get into tax exemption, right? You, you, you still got a tax exemption. Some of the tax burden has been shifted away from you. But because of just the economics, the reality of the situation, uh, once a homestead exemption like this goes into effect, inevitably, you're going to have to expect a millage rate increase to come down the line. You, you simply can't have one without the other. Um, that's why I started off by talking about, you know, the cost of your employees, the cost of gravel, the cost of fuel. All of those costs are going to rise. So if those costs are going up and your tax base is staying flat, there's no way to make ends meet without a millage rate increase. Now, you, you guys have done a great job of bringing your millage rate down over years. So may, maybe, maybe it's not beyond the county's capabilities. But the message that I'm delivering to, to all of our clients and all of the counties that we represent is this homestead exemption is great for some. For, for, for others, it shifts the tax burden to them, right? Um, but it's not a free lunch either. If you freeze the homestead, if you allow the homestead exemption freeze to go into effect, uh, no one should be surprised in a few years if a millage rate increase follows. Now, just because the millage rate went up, the homestead property owners are still seeing a overall tax reduction, right? It's just not going to feel as good when they see a millage rate increase. It's gonna feel like they didn't get a tax exemption at all. That's why I think the public hearings are so important. Because when, when I look at this, what, what I see coming down the pike is three to five years from now, in counties all over the state, there's gonna be a lot of people who felt like they didn't get what they had been sold. They had been told they were getting a homestead exemption. They had been told that their property value or their property taxes weren't going to go up. The reality of the situation is that's not possible. We can shift the tax burden from residential properties to commercial properties to a certain degree. But their taxes are still going to go up a little bit, just not as much as they would have. And so I think it's important to have that public hearing, even if you decide not to opt out. It, it's gonna give people an opportunity to hear that and to understand exactly what this looks like when it gets implemented down the line. Um, that way, there's no sticker shock. We knew what we were getting, we're getting what we were promised, and, you know, we're gonna live with it. Maybe we would have made a, a different policy decision, but at least we understand the process and we understand the types of decisions that have to be made. And then to, to, I guess we're, we're winding down now, I'm getting to the end. So the, the two things I'd like to talk about, uh, one is the, they're calling it a FLOST. So you've got a SPOST, you've got a T-SPOST, you've got a LOST. OST stands for Option Sales Tax. So this is a FLOSS. It's the, uh, floating local option sales tax. So it, it's, it's available to cities and counties when they have one of these floating homestead exemptions in, in effect. And, and I think the, the reason for that is because the General Assembly, uh, was wise enough to realize that there's no free lunch here. And if you freeze people's property values, eventually the millage rate is gonna have to creep up over time. That's, that's pure mathematics, that's inevitable. So what this does is it says if the taxpayers are willing to, to transfer a portion of the property tax burden into a sales tax burden, you can still get property tax relief in the county. And the great thing about the FLOSS is from a economic development standpoint, the taxes that are directly paid by commerce and industry, they see a tax reduction from it. So every dollar that comes in from the, from the FLOSS, sales tax, gets rolled back in the property taxes automatically. So the, the city taxpayers would be familiar with this because this is how the, the city property taxes work. Many cities don't pay a property tax at all, or many city residents don't pay a property tax at all because the city gets a share of the lost, which most communities already have in place. So the city says, in order to meet our revenue needs for the year, we, we would need a, a millage rate of four. But because of the revenue we're getting from the lost, we're able to roll our tax back down to zero. So they take the lost dollars, they replace their missing property tax dollars with it. And many cities operate wi- without a property tax, just simply using FLOSS or using LOST. The FLOSS would, would give the same opportunity to counties. And if, if there are cities out there that are still levying a property tax in addition to the lost revenue, this would give them additional funds. They could roll their property taxes back even further. Um, I don't know the, the details on the finances of, of exactly how low Newton County would be able to roll its property taxes back with a FLOSS, but we'd be able to get that information for you. But the, the important thing to know is if you have an option, if you like the idea of a floating homestead exemption, but you don't like the idea of the millage rate going up in the future, the FLOSS is the option, that's the remedy. Uh, you don't have to levy the full penny. You could do it in, in five percent increments, five percent of a penny, up until a point where you got enough revenue to offset that millage rate increase. The other, uh, thing to keep in mind with the, with the FLOSS is it doesn't just benefit the homestead property owners because they'll see the millage rate reduction, but also everyone else who owns property in the county would enjoy the benefit too because their property, uh, their millage rate is gonna go down as well. So again, we can talk about the burden shifting because everything you make, uh, everything you decide with respect to taxes is about trade-offs. You can't make tax burdens go away, but you can do different things that shift the burdens to different places. Uh, so a sales tax sounds great if you, uh, own a business in the community because you don't pay it. Uh, but people who spend money in the county, they're paying that every time they make a transaction. So let's say you have someone who doesn't own any property in the county and normally they wouldn't pay any property tax whatsoever. If you increase the sales tax, now they become major taxpayers in your community. They're picking up a share. So again, we can't make tax burdens disappear. Uh, but we can make intelligent decisions about where we put that tax burden uh, in order to, to make sure that we're, we're maximizing the county's economic health going forward and achieving any other policy objectives you have. Um, you know, if your, uh, objectives are encouraging homeownership in the county, encouraging people to put down roots and stay long-term, homestead exemption is a great tool for that. Uh, if your goal is to make your community as economically, uh, competitive from a commercial industrial development standpoint, a sales tax is a great way to do that, especially with industrial, right? They're not relying on local customers who would pay that penny sales tax. So if their property taxes are lower because people are paying a sales tax, uh, then that's great. That makes me wanna put my business, put my, uh, industrial plant in Newton County because I know that my property taxes are gonna be, uh, reduced as a result. So all of these are policy trade-offs and decisions that you have to make. Uh, where are we gonna shift the burden? How are we gonna meet our revenue demands going forward? The FLOSS option, I, I told you at the beginning that this is the one feature where it matters what your neighboring jurisdictions do. So in order for any community, for any jurisdiction, uh, whether it's the county or any one of the cities, um, to, to implement the FLOSS, it has to be the case that every local government that levies a tax has one of these floating homestead exemptions in place, right? So, you know, I don't wanna call out any city, but if, if any, let's just hypothetical city in your community, let's say they decide we don't want the, the homestead exemption, but the county and all of the other cities said, we're gonna have the homestead exemption go into effect. Well, that, that one city's decision to opt out means that no one has the option to do the sales tax, the floating option sales tax anymore, right? That's the, that's the only time it matters, what your neighboring jurisdictions are doing. If this penny sales tax sounds like something that you would be interested in, uh, then what you would need to do right now is make sure you're having conversations with your, your neighboring jurisdictions to talk about, you know, what are your plans going forward? And, and if someone's going to opt out of the homestead exemption and you were really counting on having this FLOSS as a potential revenue source, then you would wanna have a meeting with them and talk about how that FLOSS could really benefit them as well. And maybe they wouldn't need to do the homestead exemption. But that type of cooperation is something that you would want to start doing now because the opt-out deadline is March first. So the, the opt-out process, if you wanted to, to rush through it and get it done, it could be done in as little as two weeks. So no one's missed any deadlines yet. Like I said, you just have to have three public hearings. You have to run an ad in the paper one week before. Uh, and you, you could have one public hearing one day and two public hearings the next, morning and evening. And, you know, after the third meeting, the, the second evening, you adopt your resolution and send it to the Secretary of State. A very quick and easy process as long as we're getting the public involved. Um, I, I'm not aware, I was trying to remember if I had heard anything about any of the other cities having a, uh, any type of public hearing. To my knowledge, um, that there haven't been any public hearings. I believe that's, that's true, no one's made any, any decisions. The public hearing purpose, the, the law says if you want to opt out, you have to have three public hearings. And if you wanna have this option, you've got to then run a legal ad in the paper that says, we're conducting these public hearings. And unfortunately, the law says the language in that legal ad has to be done a certain way. It says, uh, you know, for, for Newton County, for example, it would say the Board of Commissioners of Newton County has, uh, elected or we are conducting a public hearing, uh, regarding the Board of Commissioners' intent to opt out of the HB five eighty-one homestead exemption. So you've gotta tell the taxpayers, be aware, we're opting out of the exemption, even if you just wanna have three public hearings to consider the possibility. And maybe you don't opt out at all. But at least for the purposes of running the legal ad, you run an ad that says, we intend to opt out and we're gonna conduct three public hearings. Uh, I recommend everyone conduct these hearings, whether you intend to opt out or not. You know, one, you, you don't have the option to opt out if you don't conduct the hearings. So by not having the hearings, you've pretty much tied your hands. You don't have the ability to opt out. Uh, number two, if you don't opt out and this homestead exemption goes into effect, and maybe that's the outcome that you want from a policy perspective. Uh, but what it means is all of the taxpayers who are affected by it aren't gonna have an opportunity to hear this information. Uh, so in a few years, if it becomes necessary to increase the millage rate, that's gonna come as a surprise to a lot of people. They said, you know, you guys have been able to reduce the millage rate year after year, and then you give us a homestead exemption and suddenly raise the, the millage rate. Doesn't feel like we got an exemption at all. Um, and so to prevent that kind of confusion, I think it would be great to have those public hearings and to let people talk about it. And, you know, I would imagine that you'd have a lot of people show up to talk in support of the homestead exemption and think it's, you know, a great thing for the community. But would, it would also give an opportunity for the people who don't want a homestead exemption, uh, like this, to, to voice their opinion. Uh, and again, the, the board could go either way at the end of those meetings. You're, you're not locked into one path. Um, but it would provide an opportunity to educate everyone and it would provide an opportunity for everyone to feel that they were heard in this process. Uh, and then after those hearings, the board would, would then have to consider a resolution. Are we going to opt out or not? You would have heard this speech from me a few times. You would have, uh, heard from the, from the voters directly. Uh, you would have given the ta- taxpayers an opportunity to be involved in these kind of policy decisions and then you'd be able to make the best informed decision that you're capable of making. Um, so that's why my recommendation is regardless of which direction you're leaning now, let's hold the public hearings. Go ahead and give the, the people an opportunity to get informed and to, to get their voices heard. And then at the end of those hearings, you could come back and make a decision based on what you've learned. So I think that summarizes and, and, um, and captures everything that is all of these moving parts that have come in with HB, HB five eighty-one. I know it's created a lot of confusion, I've seen it everywhere. Um, that's a lot to, to condense. Uh, so I've tried to answer all your questions, but I'm sure I haven't gotten everything. If you have any questions for me now, I'd, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Um, we're gonna start off with Commissioner Edwards, he had his hand first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to remind this board that it all starts with us in terms of our budget and keeping that upfront streamlined as we possibly can. Second, I want a, a real quick question. Is three, the, the inflationary increase, three percent, is that a max per year? Is it?
It, it's, it's a max. Um, I, I would, I would bank on it being at the max for this foreseeable future. Uh, what HB five eighty-one says, and this is a feature in, in all of the floating homestead exemptions that, that predated this one. Various communities have had their own version of this in place. And what they all say is there's a max of, uh, property value increase of three percent uh, or the, the, uh, Consumer Price Index, typically whichever one is lower. So if your Consumer Price Index has risen five, six, seven percent per year like it has in the past few years, then that three percent cap would be in effect. What this law says is you're capped at three percent or an inflation fact, uh, adjustment factor that's gonna be determined by the state Revenue Commissioner. And so we don't know what number the Department of Revenue is going to pick. I'd imagine they're gonna tie their figure to the, uh, to the Consumer Price Index because that's the most, uh, objective way to do it. That's the way that makes the most sense. Maybe they use some other factor, but whatever number they pick is gonna be larger than three percent for this foreseeable future. So I, I'd imagine you're gonna be right at that three percent cap for the next few years.
Okay, thank you. So, and I wanna make sure I understand this. Let's assume for a second there's no, there's no FLOSS. And our budget, the, the, the commissioner's budget is set and the, the, the homestead exemption, uh, limits does not produce the revenue we need to, for our budget. So we increase the millage rate. Now, the, the impact that this homeowner sees is less than the impact that the commercial property owner's gonna see. Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
All right, so my worry is, uh, that the, the commercial, the, the business is not gonna take a hit to their bottom line. They're gonna pass that on, that, that expense on to the people who live in the county, who eat here, dine, uh, dine here, uh, buy gas here, uh, you know, whatever. So, you know, I don't, I don't know enough about what shifting that burden is gonna mean to the average Joe, Jane or Joe on the street. I, I don't know that. So with the FLOSS, um, I don't understand what, what competitive disadvantage that may put our businesses in should the counties next to us not decide to do, uh, the, the, the FLOSS. Or the, the, the floating exemption for that matter, both, or either one. But, um, those are some of the questions I have and those are some of the questions I'll look to, for input on, um, going forward before I can make a decision on, on where I stand with this particular issue. But, uh, those, those shifting, yeah, like you say, the, 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 the dollar amount that we need is not going away. It's not gonna go down. The cost of, the, the, the cost for the county to do business is increasing, at least with the rate of inflation. So, um, uh, we, we, I think we've, we've gotta fully understand, uh, where if we're shifting this burst, burden to the commercial side, which I don't wanna do, but, um, how much is gonna be really shifted to the commercial side if they're just gonna pass it along to the consumer? Now, the good part of that is, uh, you know, we're all paying the sales tax, right? The, the, the criminals, the, the, even, uh, you know, people who don't own property are gonna be paying the, uh, the sales tax. So, so that is a positive. So I just wanna make sure we all understand the, the, the real impacts as, as, as we go forward with the, and consider this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, and, and if I could just follow up on a couple of points. I, I think you, you, you really hit the head on, on some of these issues and, and illustrated exactly how complicated some of this is. You know, if, if we wanted to, you know, pull up a crystal ball and try to say, you know, what if we, we implement the homestead exemption and we also implement the, the FLOSS sales tax? Uh, how is that going to shift the burden? Well, we, we can calculate the initial way that the tax burden shifts, but then, well, what happens when people change their behavior? Like, like you had mentioned, uh, businesses increasing the, the price of things. Or, um, if, if the, uh, business environment is less favorable, if businesses... if businesses, uh, stop growing at the rate that they're currently growing? Uh, right now, this one and a half million shortfall projection, based on keeping the millage rate the same in 2026 with the homestead exemption in effect, well, that's assuming that we have the same type of commercial and industrial growth that we've had in the past. If commercial and industrial growth stalls out, there's nowhere to shift that tax burden off of, and that's really what drives the homestead exemption. Um, so, there are, you know, there, there's really too many moving parts for anyone to come up here and say, "I can tell you with certainty what the effect of your decisions is going to be. I don't envy you having to make this decision. Uh, all I can do is try to give you as much information as I can, um, a- and do the best I can to help facilitate that."
Thanks, sir. Um, Commissioner Long?
Thank you. I, I got lots of questions. Um, I, you know, I am in the real estate market, and I do this every day, sixty hours a week. I don't, I don't, I'd like to play around with these numbers, because we're not gonna see a six percent increase. And you're saying it's more than six percent. We're starting to bottom out in values right now. That's really going on. If you look at our website for Newton County, you'll see that we, we raised income for the county at thirteen point one percent in twenty-four, and then we're projected only three point one percent this next year coming up. So, that kinda shows you where some money is right there. So, I'd have to, I can't say that these numbers are flawed, because I need to take it and calculate it, and I'm, I'm a spreadsheet girl, so I'd have to take it and do all that with it. But I don't think six percent is the right number. I think that we're, we're giving, you know, the, the whole thing to me is smoke and mirrors, this house bill. And when I say that, I mean that you're gonna take it from one side, then you're gonna, you're gonna get it back from people on the, the sales tax side. I don't like the sales tax side. I think, uh, if you know, thirteen counties had splash on their ballots in November and only four passed. So, people are getting tired of that one penny thing, too. So, I think that we have to look at that and think about that, too. I know that we can't just dump income out of the county. What happens if the values, we have another real estate bubble and the values start to go down? What happens at that point? Does anybody know?
W- well, I mean, I can't tell you what, what, uh, what you would do as a result of the declining revenue. I can tell you for tax purposes, if the market value of the home goes down, then they're not frozen at a high value. Their, their value would, would then go down, right? But it, it would be, it would be a temporary thing. If, if the market then rebounded a couple of years and went back up.
Yeah, we stayed in that for ten years.
Their ceiling stays the same, right? They, once, once someone establishes their base value, that, that creates a ceiling. If the home values start going down, then, you know, they're, for tax purposes, their value will go back down. The, when the housing market rebounds, their, their values will go up for tax purposes until it hits that ceiling.
It's just, it's unique that we always think about them going up, but we have had some years that they came down, and, and that took a lot of years to get it back up, and we had some financial problems with that situation. Um, you know, the millage rate, you know, you, you take it away, we raised the millage rate. That's another smoke and mirrors to me. You can say all day long, "We hadn't raised the millage rate." Well, my taxes still went up. What happened? 'Cause my property values went up. I mean, I, I really would love if we could do something to protect our seniors, more than these things. I mean, I know the people that wrote the bill, and they're trying, they're trying to do something to help, but I don't think it helps the generation of people that we need to be helping, and that's our seniors. Um, and that's my biggest concern, is I don't wanna, a- a- and, you know, Newton County's grown, we're getting all this growth, and we, we, every, every month, we have this, you know, people come in here trying to build industrial, trying to build commercial. You know, we're gonna see, uh, we're gonna see some, the, the numbers are gonna be better than what y'all are saying this loss is, if we do this. Now, five years from now, I can't say that, 'cause I don't know. But I don't think that these numbers are, are, are good projection. And, and that's just my opinion, that I think they're skewed a little bit from what we actually see in the real estate world and what we're seeing growth here in Newton County.
Yeah, well, it, that, that's a great point, Commissioner. If, if I had the ability...
It's hard, it's hard, a crystal ball, but, you know...
That's right. If I had the ability to predict the market, you know, I, I'd be, I'd be on my own private island somewhere.
Well, I know that, I, I know that so many counties, because I work in a lot of counties, that the tax assessors, which they're doing their job, you can't be mad at them. Marty, I'm not mad at you, girl. Um, they're doing their job. They're getting these values up. Some of them, I think, are overvalued. That's why we have a process for that. But, uh, they, these counties have done a good job, and people complain, because they got everybody up. I, it's almost like they knew this was coming. So, they got everybody up. And, uh, like I say, they're doing their job. That's what they're supposed to do. But I think that we're, we're, we're at these max on some of these values. I looked at some people's values today, and they're all overtaxed here in our county. Their property value is higher than what I could sell it for. And that doesn't happen very often, but we're starting to see that. So, um, those are, those are my big concerns to the, to our board.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lind.
Thank you. Um, this isn't, this is, the way that I understand this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you opt in, if you, if you automatically go in, you can't come out. You're stuck, right? It's permanent, right? But there is an alternative that may address some of the issues that we have. And some of the alternatives that we have are that we can do something through local delegation, with, well, a local delegation, which will allow for us to have more flexibility. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. That's a great point. And, you know, the concept of a floating homestead exemption isn't new. Uh, cities and counties have, on a one-off basis, asked their local delegation to do this through local law. So, the way that works is the Board of Commissioners passes a, a motion or to, or a resolution to ask the local delegation, "Would you write a law that would apply just to Newton County? And that we can tweak the homestead exemption or tweak the way that we're, we're doing things." Uh, and then, you know, that has to go to the voters. They, they have a voter referendum, because it's creating a new tax exemption. Um, that's certainly an option. And, and I wanna, I'm glad you brought that up, because, you know, I mentioned earlier with this floss sales tax. If one of the cities or if the county opted out, it means no one could get it. Uh, one, one thing to point on that is, you know, it's never final. The law says you can do the homestead, uh, floating homestead sales tax, as long as everyone has a tax, uh, a floating homestead tax exemption at that time. So, if, if someone opts out, and then in three years, you decide, you know, "It turns out, we've got a, a lot of revenue coming in through tourism, or money's coming in from out of the county, so, a sales tax seems like a really good way to generate revenue in the county." Well, at that point, anyone who's got buyer's remorse about, um, opting out of the homestead exemption could do just what you mentioned, and go to the General Assembly and say, "We wanna, we want an option that's tailored just for us." And so, it would slow down the process of implementing a floss, uh, but i- it's, it's never ruled out completely. But the alternative, if you don't opt out, that's permanent. And it's gonna be in place for a long time, because it's, it's state law. And the General Assembly can't come in and exempt a county from, from state law on a one-off basis. The General Assembly can give you an additional homestead exemption on a one-off basis, but they can't come in and, and say, "Everyone's exempt but Newton County." Once you, once you miss your opt-out window, you've given up the, the ability to have your own voice on that from that point forward.
As from the standpoint of the time stamp, 'cause the way I see it is, if the option is available to do it through the local delegation, which gives us more flexibility, and we see that the plan works for us, then we can continue to do this and not have to increase the millage rate, even with inflation, even with the price of, of items going up. If it works for us, then we can, we can do that. And if it doesn't work for us, how long does it take to undo it? Is it one season to undo it? Is it two seasons, tax seasons, to undo it?
Are you talking about a locally implemented, uh, homestead exemption? Uh, I, I would say it would take, uh, realistically about two tax cycles to, to have it done, because you would have to, um, you know, get the information to your local delegation. They would have to get it passed through, through their session, and the General Assembly only has one session a year. Uh, and then, once it's done, it would then have to go to, to the voters again. And depending on the timing, that, there are only so many elections a year. You have to have at least ninety days' advance notice. So, I would say it's, it's probably more like two cycles to, to get out of a local homestead exemption. Um, but I'll tell you, I, I've been involved in, in tax law for a long time, and I don't know of any community that has eliminated a tax exemption, a local homestead exemption before. It's possible, but apparently it's not feasible. I just don't know of any examples. Um, so, if you, if you put it in, it's highly unlikely it's ever gonna come out.
That's, and, and that's, that's, I think that that's one of the concerns I have, because you're stuck like Chuck, like for, forever, until the law changes, if the law changes. But the other thing is, the, um, this shifting, this, the burden shifting. I understand that, um, Commissioner Edwards had, um, mentioned about the commercial properties and how we, you know, are gonna punish the commercial industries, and, and it may fall back on us. But that only applies if the millage rate has to go up, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, like I said, it's, it's from a pure finance standpoint.
Oh, sorry.
From, from a purely financial standpoint, it's, it's hard for me to envision a, a future where you have the homestead exemption in, in effect, and you don't have to increase the millage rate in, in the future. It's, it's just hard for me to, to see how that's financially possible, un- unless inflation s- substantially flattens out. So, knowing that that's likely to happen, um, you know, I, I, I don't know if it would be possible to have the homestead exemption and not increase your millage rate. But you're right, if you were able to do both, then the, the people would see the full benefit of the homestead exemption.
And then last, the floss. The way that the floss works, tha- is that possible to actually also do that through local deleg- delegation?
Well, i- i- in a way, um, you, the, the sales tax has to be done at a, at a statewide level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but let's say someone opts out, and it disqualifies all of the other communities in the county. Uh, that, that jurisdiction that opted out, uh, if, to make everyone eligible again, they could go to the local delegation and say, "We would now like to have our own local homestead, floating homestead exemption. Pass a law just for us, let our voters vote on it." And once that floating homestead exemption goes into effect in that opt-out community, then everyone is eligible again.
Okay. And my last question is, with the, if we decide that we're gonna do this, and we decide we're gonna go ahead and buy into what the state thinks is gonna be in the best interest of, you know, the taxpayers, um, and we see that this is something that's hurting us, we have other policies that we can potentially adjust to kinda offset that. What do you think about, like, for instance, and I hate to use this word, but I'm gonna use it anyway, tax abatements, limiting tax abatements, so that we don't have to worry about that money coming out of revenue and it stays in? I mean, is that something that can offset this, if we decide that we're gonna do this?
Yeah, it, it could. Um, so, uh, but I, I'd like to put it in perspective. So, let's look at, I, I'm glad the slide is still on the screen. Let's look at 2026. The loss in, in digest value is gonna be a hundred and eighty-six million dollars coming off your, your taxable digest. That's after it's been, um, reduced by forty percent. So, in order to, you know, see, to, to get that money back through abatements, it, it would have to be true that you had a hundred and eighty-six million dollar tax abatement, that you didn't do that year. Um, and to my knowledge, that's not how, your, your abatements are much less than that.
Yeah.
I mean, they're big for the, the industry, right? That, that local developer, it's, it's huge tax savings. But when we're looking at the, the total tax digest as a whole, that, that's not gonna have nearly as much of impact as these homestead exemptions will. Um, by 2027, and again, we're, we're just assuming, um, that there's six percent growth, it, we're, we're up to three hundred million dollars a year of lost digest value to levy your millage rate against. So, that's a, that would be essentially like having a three mi- three hundred million dollar tax abatement in, in one single year. So, you see, just in scale, that's a, that's a very big difference between the amount of the abatements and the amount of the homestead exemption.
Okay.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. A question that I have, and, is that, what, what about our commercial businesses, like Baxter, Beck, Salter, and all those big businesses? And I can remember, maybe it was a month ago, Mr. C., that they came and said, "Well, we got a check for four hundred thousand dollars and, and over the years, for all the tax abatements that we had, we had given them, and, you know, and there's a little bit of money coming back." Is any of that money, and all those tax abatements that we gave them, is it, how much is coming back, actually going back into our taxes?
Yeah.
I guess, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I, I, I didn't wanna interrupt. I just wanted to say, I think that's, that's a great point. Um, I think the, the local, um, you, you've got a, a really good development authority. You've got a great assessor's office. Uh, they may be able to tell you, you know, let's look at the number of jobs that were created from some of these abatements, and we might be able to, to try to match dollar for dollar, you know, what did we get out of these? Um, you know, I'll, I'll tell you personally, um, you know, I'm not a huge proponent of these tax abatements. I, I understand what they're, you know, why they're there. Sometimes, you know, it's more important to have the jobs right now than it is to have those tax dollars right now. But you wanna make sure that it's paying off. You're, you're trading away tax dollars for jobs. And if you're not getting the kind of jobs that, that you want, that was a bad investment. That's the way you, you would analyze that. So, although you're giving away some revenue, um, with a, with a tax abatement, if you're creating jobs locally, and those people are able to spend money in your community, and they're buying houses in your community, you're gonna get some back, but it would take a, a deep level of financial analysis to tell you. Are you getting every dollar that, that you bargained for? I'm not, I'm not equipped to, to give you that information.
Uh, uh, thank you. Well, and just, I guess, just a couple more questions. Is that the citizens, especially the seniors of Newton, Newton County, they went ahead and paid, they allowed them to have that tax abatement? And then, in, in return, 'cause I was here then, in return, that we were gonna see this big old cash flow, and the commercial was gonna, I guess, bring us up, and, and the taxes was gonna go down, and it never happened. And then, what little money that did come in, what happened to it? It never went towards taxes. And I think most recently, it was placed on our ballot, uh, if somebody correct me if I'm wrong, for every citizen in Newton County who wanted to, to vote for what or not they wanted. What it plays on the ballot?
I, I'm not aware of, uh, of the, the one you were talking about.
This, what we, the House bill, um...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about a tax abatement. Yeah, the homestead exemption, you're right.
Right.
Um, so, after the General Assembly wrote HB 581 and the governor signed it, um, it didn't become the law until all the voters approved it. A- and I may be wrong, but I think it, it was more than seventy percent voter approval. I mean, tax, the homestead exemptions are very popular. Um, so, it certainly passed the voters.
Absolutely. And so, if I was running for office, and if the citizen came in and voted for, voted for me, then I would be in their seats, same as all of us here, sitting around in our horseshoe. And they would have, they're telling us who they wanted. And I think they're telling us that they want us to address this and make this happen. Now, I, I agree with Commissioner Long, that we need to look at our seniors. Need to look at our seniors, 'cause I think they've been on the, and I've been criticized on the bad end of, of half of the folks who want to get their home repaired, didn't get it. And then, you know, I've criticized, when I went to the house, and it wasn't the type of material that I thought they should have in their home. But, uh, let us not disappoint our folks again. Uh, what I think we, I, what I think we need to do, we need to figure out how we can, if that's what the citizens want. You said seventy percent? How, we, I think we need to do it, figure out a way to do it, 'cause it is a board of commissioners. And we need to move forward with it and figure out a way and continue hiring Gerard and Davis at this point, and figure out a way for us to do it, because y'all are the smartest, uh, as far as being our county attorneys. Are we gonna have a public hearing, and, and maybe just need to go to our county manager, a public hearing as far as the citizen coming in and, and just telling us what they want? Okay. It just, it's gonna be one of them?
Yeah.
I have three of them. So, they're gonna, probably gonna come in in a few minutes and ask questions?
Well, well, this wouldn't, wouldn't count. This is just a, a work session.
Okay.
Um, but no, I think you're right.
Last question, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I think you're right, a- and, um, I'll turn it back over to you. But what, what I had envisioned, um, and what I've advised other communities to do is run your legal ads for the three public hearings. And then, at the start of each hearing, we'll, we'll just assume that, um, you know, people are coming into this to, to get information, as much as to share information that they have. And so, the way we would structure it is, there would be a, a, maybe an abbreviated presentation, like what, what I just gave here. Uh, we would then have a, a question and answer session for, for the citizens. You know, hold off on your comments. If you've made up your mind, we're gonna get to that in the third section. But the, the middle section, this is question and answer. People come up, ask questions of the board, ask questions of the attorney, ask questions of the tax assessor. Get their information, and then we would close it out with a public hearing. You know, just like what you're used to, everyone signs up. They have their allotted time to come and have, have their, uh, opinion heard. But they would do it after getting a, a good bit of information as well. And I think that process would, would really help, not only educate, but like I said, it gives people an opportunity to feel heard and to, to actually tell you what they want. Because, um, you know, we, we know in, in the aggregate what the voters in the state said. We, we know what the voters did when they looked down at paper and said, "Yeah, the homestead exemption sounds good. I'm gonna vote for that." But if we tell them exactly what it looks like, that some, some people may change their mind on it. But even if they don't, uh, at least they, they had this process and, and they got some more information. They had an opportunity to get engaged, and I think all of those things are very good.
Oh, absolutely. And my final comment, Mr. Chairman, is that I think, I know as far as me, J.C. Henderson, I'm all sad with the people, or did with my government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Cooper, anything else before we close? You had a hand? You sure? You positive? Okay. Mr. Cooper, anything else before we close out, sir?
Mr. Chairman, there's nothing else on the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. We will be, uh, scheduling these public hearings. I want to give commissioners a heads up. Um, like, um, Mr. Meyer said, there will be three of them. Um, so please prepare yourself for those. Guys, if there's nothing else, I seek a motion. Uh, thank you, Mr. Meyer, for being here tonight. Thank you, um, Marty and your team, and thank you, um, Mr. Bennett for being here as well. Um, if there's nothing else, I seek a motion that we dismiss.
No motion.
The motion by Commissioner Mason, second by, uh, Commissioner Long. All in favor? Thank you. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much.